I want to call the Hopkinton Town Council meeting of May 21st, 2018 to order with a moment of silent meditation and a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any motion to sit as licensed in board?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. First up, special event permanent, open a hearing on an application for a special event permanent filed by Nathaniel McCauskey on behalf of Ashway Cub Scout Pack One, Mary Dance Council Boy Scouts of America, K.O. Box 965, Ashway. Co-sponsored by the Hopkinton Rec Department and Ashway Culminator Fire Department for a family campout scheduled for 12:00 PM on June 23rd, 2018 through 10:00 AM June 24th, 2018 at Randall Field. Nathaniel?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
It's going to be our regular family campout similar to our previous years. We're going to have a campfire in a little container, we're going to do chores, we're going to be there in tents overnight, play games, and have a lot of fun.
As you have many use cases, how many of you guys have been doing this?
Uh, we used to do it decades ago, then we took a break, and then the last six or seven years in a row, we've done it.
So the application is all complete?
Yes.
Anyone else have any questions?
Have a wonderful one.
Thank you, sir. Have fun.
Who approved the application for a special event permanent filed by Nathaniel McCauskey on behalf of the Ashway Cub Scout Pack One? And this is co-sponsored with the Hopkinton Rec Department, the Ashway Fire Department, and it is scheduled for 12:00 PM on June 23rd through 10:00 AM on June 24th at the Randall Field. And we will waive the...
Second.
Thank you, any second, any further discussion? Anything heard, now all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next up, zoning ordinance amendment, open a hearing on an application... All right, can we reconvene as council, please?
Very.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Zoning ordinance amendment, open a hearing on an application for a zone amendment to the zoning map filed by the town of Hopkinton and Coastal Plastics Incorporated for property located at 35 McKennick Street, identified as Assessor's Map 15 Lot 13B. Hannah McAllister, you're going to give us a brief presentation.
Very brief. Thank you, good evening. I'm actually in the unusual position of being the applicant on this tonight. Several months ago, it was brought to my attention through the zoning official that there was a zoning issue with the zoning map relative to Assessor's Plan 15 Lot 13B. It appears that it's listed as being zoned RFR-80 when in fact it's been a manufacturing operation since 1880s or so. It's an industrial red brick building that was built in 1880. It's next to, on Lot 13, which is a larger piece that's right next to it, there's a similar factory building there. When that was brought to my attention, I asked for some help from several of the departments, including Jim Lampier in planning, Liz Monte in assessors, and Lisa, our town clerk. And all of them did their own independent research, and it's been assessed as manufacturing for all these years. Apparently this mistake occurred during a comprehensive plan amendment in 1994. Nobody really knows how it happened, but it's just a mistake. It was brought to our attention the right way. It just seemed like we should fix it because it's basically a typographical error that occurred in 1994 or so. It's been treated as manufacturing, it's been used as manufacturing, it's in a real manufacturing zone and a real manufacturing building since 1880. So it's just time to right a wrong, and that's really it.
Do you guys have any questions for Kevin on this particular issue? Any greater topical question here, yes, may I?
Hi, I'm Shannon McCann, I live at 22 Nichols Lane. I guess my question is why now is it being changed? Is there a reason? Is the property going to be sold? Or is there an ultimate plan? Because it seems kind of fishy that it's been listed since 1880 and all of a sudden they discover something in 1994 and now no one wants to change it.
Well, I don't know what the intent is behind it. It's just a mistake that was brought to the attention of the town through the zoning official, and our independent research of this confirms it's a mistake. So, I don't, I mean personally, it's not, to me, I don't make decisions, but I don't look at it as a change, I look at it as a correction of something that is what it has been all these years, since 1880. That's all. It's been assessed for various reasons that way, it's a big manufacturing number.
Is it a tax difference in...
Well, you get taxed more if you manufacture generally speaking.
So I mean, is that part of the reason that the town wants to change?
It sounds like it is.
Or that the property owner, so the property owners aren't going to want to change if their taxes are going up, right?
It's already been, it's always been manufactured.
It's always taxed, even though it's a RFR.
Right. It's not labeled as RFR.
Yeah.
Which is evidence that it was a mistake because it had assessed as manufacturing and taxed at a higher rate. So, it's just something that brought to the town's attention.
Are you the applicant as the property owner?
Well, I'm the town solicitor.
No, I think what happened is we were redoing the entire comprehensive plan for the last two years, and our town planner looked at every single zoning classification to make sure it was correct, and he discovered some people wanted to go manufacturing, some were RFR-80, but this particular one was discovered as an error.
Right, that's what I understand.
But it's because we were taking a look at it piece by piece, parcel by parcel, to clean it up for the common man, which we cleaned not too long ago. So I think that's why...
So does the comprehensive plan have something, like what's the plan for that property?
The plan for the property is manufacturing, always has been manufacturing, and the property next to it is manufacturing. So it was simply a mistake. And sometimes that occurs, we have taxes for manufacturing, there are still many taxes for manufacturing, we just want it corrected, it's a typo.
The plan map shows it as residential.
Yeah, right, I have a plan map.
Thankfully it wasn't the other way around, we'd be in trouble.
Right.
There's money.
Yeah, exactly. It just seems as weird that all these...
I was on the council in 1994, and 1994 was when we did the first comprehensive plan, so I'm not surprised something has come up as an error. So, the bottom line is, as you've heard, the town has been getting money for it as a manufacturing all along. So when this goes back, when this is corrected, they're going to still pay the same amount. There isn't going to be any addition, it's just going to be a correction on the town's part. And whether they want to sell it tomorrow has nothing to do with it, or if they wanted to, they could. So we're correcting something. We don't want it to be RFR-80. It should be manufacturing, it always was treated as manufacturing.
And taxes.
Yeah, so that's...
So is the property owner here? They don't need to... They're not required to be here?
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else wishing to be heard on this matter? Okay, can I motion to either close or continue?
I have a motion to close the hearing until the day of the session.
One second.
Second.
Okay, motion made in second. Lisa, all those in favor?
Aye.
Lisa, what?
Do you want to add your next regularly scheduled agenda? Would you be doing four, I don't know, five?
Yeah, very good on June 4th. Next up, consent agenda approved, May 1st, 2018, financial town assembly minutes, town council meeting minutes of May 7th, 2018, special town council meeting minutes of May 8th, 2018, executive session minutes of April 2nd, 2018. Accept the following monthly financial activity report. Town clerk approved a petition with National Grid Verizon for a joint poll location on Conneville Road.
Can you pull a special town council meeting minutes of May 8th?
Who would be, who's consent agenda? And the executive session minutes on a comprehensive plan. If you want, move forward.
Please.
All right, who would approve the consent agenda with the three whole lines?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Who's got Barbara?
Page six, page seven.
Seven, page six?
Anybody who will, recently you have me down, help over the next line, so I abstain, because I abstain, I propose.
Ten minutes.
I'll write in the notes. Page six, council minutes, page seven.
So that should be abstain?
Yeah, it should just be abstain.
Did she have something?
No, I didn't.
No.
Give it up, sorry.
Yeah, she noted the May 8th, I'm supposed to be sitting over there.
All right, so clearly approved town council meeting minutes of May 7th, 2018. Everybody else do something to finish time.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And approved special town council meeting minutes of May 8th.
All those in favor?
Aye. Do we have things to add?
Okay, first public forum, anyone wishing to be heard on anything? Not on the agenda? Great, poll business, number one, rendered decision regarding petition for a zoning ordinance amendment involving a zoning map amendment and the comprehensive plan map amendment filed by Rhode Island Solar Renewable Energy, LLC, 43 Preston Way, Warwick, Rhode Island 02886, and Maxon Hill LLC, 10 Wacosta Farm Road, Hope Valley, Rhode Island 02832, for property owned by Maxon Hill LLC located at 310 Main Street, identified as Assessor's Platform Lot 25 from an RFR-80 mixed-use village zone to commercial special zone as a result of the hearing held on March 19th, 2018. We've had our hearing, and I guess council, any further comments? Barbara?
On the zoning decision, since this is both a zoning and a comprehensive plan decision, I wanted to make the following comment. I have appreciated the thorough presentations and discussions concerning this particular parcel close to exit one, bounded at catch and leave by Route 3 Frontier Road and Maxon Hill Road. This exit off Route 95 as well as exit two have always been considered our beach property with the highest potential for commercial and industrial development within the borders of Hopkinton. It has always been considered to be a convenient area for offices, retail, hospital, banking, restaurants, and marketing for industrial development because it is close to a major highway, and these parameters have not changed. A solar array of this size, over 50 acres, on a parcel of 138 acres, would give the town a sizable amount of tax money, but not enough to drop the mill rate any more than two or three cents. Taxes, although necessary at every time, needs to be cognizant of their use. However, this seems to be one of the only benefits of the solar array in this location. The proposed solar array falls directly on Route 3, a major secondary road, and although we have had excellent presentations concerning protection of water, wetlands, and soil runoff, we have seen in other communities as well as our own how this has not occurred. And once damaged, it's very hard to correct. These wetlands feed a primary aquifer. The clearcutting and the industrial installation of thousands of brackets will affect the soil, rock, and strata under this parcel. However, my largest concern is that this parcel, if we allow the zone change, will bring no jobs, no economic development, no houses, no one to work, pay taxes, or spend money on every other aspect of living in a community. In order to attract a grocery store, a bank, a hotel, more restaurants, retail, we need more routes, more people, more families, more working employers and employees. A solar array gives none of this, and none of this for 50 years or more. We do not know the future, and even if this parcel is clear cut for pasture, or cornfields, or hay, let alone for homes, we would have workers, we would have families, and we would have farmers. As the town of Hopkinton and the village of Ashway have been rural, bucolic, historic neighborhoods for several centuries, I loathe changes to particular cultural and aesthetic on my watch. It's why my family and many others moved here in the first place. I am not willing to damage the land and the aquifer or undermine the ability to market this exit as commercial, industrial, retail property. I do not want the entrance to our community to be 50 acres of industrial solar behind a chain link fence with plants on our main road. I'm against the proposed zone change and the comprehensive plan change.
David, can you have it?
Sure. Right, I'm somewhat competitive with Barbara with what you just said, saying things she said. I want people to know that in general, I like community, I like solar, I like hydro, I like wind power, I really do. But I have a real problem with this project. I have a great feeling the planning board, the planning board rejected this proposal. That's number one, and that counts in my book. It also goes against the comprehensive plan, which can be changed. We can change the comprehensive plan, we can do that on a rare occasion, but the comprehensive plan is set there so that people know what the town's going to be like. Where the commerce is going to be, where the industrial areas are going to be, and where the residential areas are going to be. And that's why we have a comprehensive plan. It really, as Barbara says, it doesn't add to the quality of life for the residents. It really doesn't. It doesn't produce jobs, it doesn't produce any services. And those are two big things that I think that we needed this town. I like profit development, of commercial development around the exits, there's no doubt about that. But this development doesn't provide, the kind of development I didn't see on exit one or exit two, it provides for jobs, it provides services. Tax-wise, did I have any argument with Barbara about this? I did a little research, did a little calculation, and I'm an old math major. It's going to lower the tax rate by about eight to nine cents. Our tax rate's $20 a change, $0.90 a change, that's a drop in the bucket. This thing is not going to be over, my golly, we're going to get a lot of money out of this solar array. So, it's no big deal, the taxes. I think, and I could be wrong, I think the residents up at Maxon Hill Road expected at the most housing to be across the street from them. The trees now are really nice. They bought the houses there, they built the houses there with the expectation that it was going to be a residential area, not a commercial area across the street. And now how are we going to face for that possibility? A couple of minor notes here. I don't believe anybody went to their daughter's door on Maxon Hill. I talked to two people, two residents up there, and they said nobody came to their door. They got a flyer, kind of a flyer, but nobody came to talk to them face to face, so I don't believe that. I also don't believe what was told the planning board that the proposers of this solar array are going to be planting a thousand trees. You don't plant trees around a solar array. They may leave a few trees up there, they may be in the marshlands, but nobody plants trees around a solar array, so I don't believe that either. Finally, and I'm going to use Barbara's word here, I think a lot of people in this town live here for the bucolic community of its own. They don't want to live in the green, they want to live in Warwick, East Province. They want to live in Hopkinton where there's trees and there's fields. I like the green, the green is trees and fields. I like green power, but I also like the green, and I think a lot of people downhill like that. So, in this case of the situation, sometimes it's just a case of having too much of a good thing, and this is one of those cases. It's a good thing, but it's the wrong place at the wrong time, and so I come against it.
And do you have any comments?
Yeah, I have a motion to make.
All right, before you make that, Tom, do you have any comments?
No, I think we went through most of it.
On the hearing?
The hearing. I made my mind up then, and I don't see... I've had two residents from Maxon Hill stop by my house, making sure that I was in favor of the solar there. Nobody spoke against it at the cavern, if I remember correctly.
Excuse me, that's...
Well, maybe one, okay.
Okay, three separate residents that spoke against it.
I apologize, I don't recall that, and we go to so many meetings and stuff together. So I really don't have any...
If you're looking for just comments, some of the things that we talked about at the hearing and that was in the documents, for instance, 30% of that property is wetlands. Roy Dubs, who is the owner of the property, who will be selling it if this moves forward, has tried for about, well, more than seven years, he came to the town before to look for zone change. He's been trying to come up with some sort of commercial use, something that fits with the zone, and he hasn't been able to do it. But that doesn't mean that someday somebody could build there. While it's a difficult parcel, if you remember, there were wetlands pretty much all over the place. The wetlands are not going to be touched or moved, or that's why they got an insignificant ruin from insignificant impact of the wetlands application. There were a couple of butters that spoke in favor of the project. And my opinion on this is that because of the, because of the property, and it's not the slopes, it's just the wetlands that they're, they're not all in one place, they're scattered about, that I think it's a difficult piece of property for any use. And in this particular use, as we all know, it's solar, it's not going to, it's not going to impact the... There's no septic system, you know, you're not going to pour a well. So, they've done their best to, in the hearing, in their maps, and we should accept and adopt all of those testimony and the experts that came in. We should adopt all that if we're going to move forward on the project. But I guess that's basically it.
Yeah, I guess Tom took in all the information from the hearing and thought it was a good project based on a lot of different factors from the hearing. And aside from good revenue, not using any town services, this to date, Billy, you can correct me if I'm wrong, this is only our third solar project we've approved to date? No, you got Bank Street, the one on 91 and... I know there are a lot of them in the pipeline. We've also had a joint workshop with the planning board. They're working on revising the solar ordinance to incorporate a lot of the concerns that we had at the joint workshop. So those will be incorporated at some point, hopefully in the very near future going forward. So, and I agree with, I think everyone up here agrees that there needs to be some tweaking of that ordinance for a lot of different reasons, but that is moving forward as well, so I do support it as well. Any further comments from the council?
I move that the following, relative to the petition for a comprehensive plan future land use map amendment to map 13 filed, and the petition for a zoning ordinance amendment filed by Rhode Island Solar Renewable Energy, LLC, 43 Preston Way, Warwick, and Maxon Hill LLC, 10 Wacosta Farm Road, Hope Valley, for property owned by Maxon Hill LLC located at 310 Main Street, identified as Assessor's Map Lot 25 from an RFR-80 mixed-use village zone amendment to commercial, special zone. And following the deliberations by the town council there on May 21st, 2018, for the petitioner's proposal to install a solar array involving the erection and installation of solar panels on the parcels approximately 137 acre site in order to generate approximately 11.75 megawatts AC of energy, requiring the zone change from RFR-80 to commercial in accordance with Section 16A-E. The zoning ordinance of the town of Hopkinton has amended. This motion is to approve said petition and hereby adopt the two proposed ordinances numbered as Chapters 257 and 258 respectively, based upon the following findings and subject to the following conditions. The findings are, subject to the conditions which follow and based upon the evidence and testimony and record presented and submitted at the March 19th, 2018 hearing, the proposed zoning ordinance amendment and the proposed comprehensive plan future land use map amendment to map 13 are both consistent with the authority reserved to the council and the comprehensive plan to identify those areas in town where such uses are appropriate and to identify the conditions under which such uses may exist, that the proposed changes will provide benefits to the town in terms of enhanced tax revenue to be received from the property as a result of the development of the solar array, that the changes proposed will promote an important local state and national objective seeking alternative energy sources that are safe for the environment and citizens of Hopkinton, that the proposed changes will not adversely affect the health, safety, or welfare of the town and are in the best interest of the community, that the proposed changes are suitable to the character of the location in question and constitute a non-opulous use, and that the proposed use is in conformance with provisions of the comprehensive plan. The conditions are as follows. As conditions for the approval of the proposed changes, the petitioners and their successors and members must hear the following. Number one, the zoning district classification is changed from RFR-80 to commercial with the restrictions that the property's use hereafter is limited to Use Code 486 followed by solar energy systems along with the restrictions further placed upon the use stated in Chapter 134, Section 538, and with the further conditions that, A, the zoning designation for the property shall revert back to RFR-80 mixed-use village zone automatically and without further action of the town council as the proposed use and/or actual use of the property as an operating photovoltaic solar energy system is abandoned or terminated; and B, that the applicant's representative, excuse me, that the applicant's representation that the use of the site as a photovoltaic solar energy system has received the final interconnection approval of the solar array facility by National Grid is accurate. Number two, decommissioning and other provisions in place for photovoltaic solar energy systems as set forth in Chapter 134 as amended as well as under Hopkinton Planning Board requirements shall be complied with, including but not limited to the posting of a decommissioning cash escrow bond in the amount of $270,000... $200,000? It's been corrected by the planner and by the solicitor. So the amount is $270,250, which is found to be fair and reasonable and based upon the presented evidence of rent. Number three, in conjunction with the decommissioning and other provisions referred to above, and in addition to the decommissioning cash escrow bond described above, the petitioners shall prepare a reforestation plan to be approved by the planning board and post an additional cash escrow bond in a reasonable amount to be determined by the planning board designed to ensure implementation and completion of the reforestation plan so approved. Number four, the bottom of the perimeter fencing required by Section 53 of Chapter 134 shall be raised six inches above the ground so as to allow migratory passage of small species through the site. Number five, the petitions shall prepare and submit to the planning board for approval a reasonable plan designed to sustain the native animal species in and around the solar array facility during its construction and its operation until the facility's closure. Number six, while operating, noise levels from the inverters within the solar array should not exceed the World Health Organization standard of... should not exceed the World Health Organization standard of fifty-five decibels measured at a distance of three meters from each of seven inverters. During the site preparation, installation stages of the construction of the solar array, such work shall be performed only during Monday through Friday work week and only between the hours eight AM to five PM. The adoption of ordinances...
Excuse me? Can you mention the numbers when you go to the twenty?
Oh, okay. Number eight, the adoption of ordinances, chapter two-five-nine and two-sixty respectively, is consistent with the town of Hopkinton's comprehensive plan and in particular with the plan's objective LEU restricting potential polluting land uses from an adequate protection zone area and with the plan's goal, EB, number three, targeting development that is consistent with eliminating anything that is adverse to the quality of life, including establishing business interests that will have limited to no impact to the environment. Number nine, location of the solar panels shall be limited to the areas of the sites, one hundred and thirty-seven acres as depicted on the development plans filed at the Hopkinton Planning Board. And number ten, waivers that were requested by the applicant, including septic system, evidence of water supply, are hereby approved. Number eleven, of the approximately one hundred and thirty-seven acres, not more than fifty-eight acres or less than fifty-five acres will be used for the solar farm, and approximately seventy acres will remain forested. Number twelve, during construction, no blasting is allowed. All topsoil will remain on-site, and the town's engineer or representative will do periodic inspections, and the town will be reimbursed for this cost. Additionally, the applicant and future owners will be required to submit inspection reports to the town manager or his representative every month for the life of the project. After the completion of the project, number thirteen, after the completion of the project, the applicant and any future owners will allow the town to conduct inspections in April of every year for the life of the project and will reimburse the town for this cost. Number fourteen, the applicant will allow the town the option to purchase meter credits in order to lower its electricity cost. And that's my motion. I'd like to make an amendment to the motion. Number six, while operating, the noise levels from the inverters within the solar array shall not exceed the World Health Organization standard of forty decibels measured at a distance of three meters from each of said inverters. Fifty-five is considered annoyance, forty is considered quiet rural nighttime.
I'll second her amendment.
Well, she just didn't want to make a petition. So, we won't... she just asked number six so we could vote on the amendment first.
My number eleven says that fifty-eight acres will remain forested. Foresting restricts me as trees. I don't think a lot of that land up there that's not going to be touched is tree. I think it's grasslands, I think it's brush and stuff like that. So, I'd like just a minute to say that fifty-eight acres will remain untouched until they go that long. Just because there are certain areas up there that are not tree, that they aren't forested. Well, if we mean untouched, then that covers the grass, that's the green area.
Let me just respond to the break from the record so we're sure we're right on target with the facts. It is one hundred, let's see, thirty percent is wetlands, oh, there is. The question was, on one of your sheets, I think it's number six, I think you got a breakout of the wetlands and cleared land, and the answer was yes. We were stating that approximately seventy acres of the site is to remain wooded of the one hundred and thirty-seven or one hundred and thirty-eight. So, there's your...
What is it, okay.
And then there's ten acres of metallands that are already cleared. So, those ten acres are going to be part of the solar. So, seventy acres is just forested, and that's right on there. I got it at the hearing, and that was their statement by the expert. So, we don't need to change it. They said they'd stay at seventy, what's holding?
Yes, some of it is definitely forested, I think it's a swamp up there.
And there's wetlands too.
Yeah, yeah. So, I just don't want them to think that we're talking about trees, we're talking about wetland area, we're talking about muggy areas, we're talking about the grassland areas, all that kind of stuff. I just, I think if we say untouched, that would be nice. We may say, whatever we need. Right, if you want to go forested, I just expect that that means a tree area.
Right, forested forests.
Right. So, some of that, some of that seventy acres isn't forested, there's no trees on it.
Well, if their expert says there are seventy acres forested, and I'm okay with that, I think if there's non-forest, whether it's wetlands, DPM, or whatever.
All right, so Barbara amended, Sylvia's motion is going to weigh in on Barbara's amended motion.
And I second, I give a second.
Okay, you did, okay. Motion was being seconded, all of those in favor?
Aye. The amended motion?
Second. Yes, she is motion.
We need somebody to second it as amended.
As amended.
Okay, I'm sorry. So, Tom amended that motion as amended. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Aye. Or aye.
We're talking about forty acres, three to forty decibels.
Okay, so two noes, three yes. Motion, motion passed. Next up, under old business number two, discussions are considered and booked to authorize the council president to sign the two thousand eighteen Rhode Island Department of Environmental Management Recreation Agreement regarding landworthy field improvements phase two, three hundred thousand dollar grant. Motion made a second and a discussion booked. Have you heard of others in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. Both of those, chapter two-thirty, two-fifty-nine and two-sixty?
Yeah, it was contained in the motion.
Was it? Is it, both petitions were included in the one motion?
Okay.
And the two ordinances were included in the one?
In the past, we have been going down.
All right. Next up, on the new business, number one, discussion regarding the status of the Ashway Elementary School, nineteen oh four building. So, I know, I want to just get a quick signal on how many folks may want to speak.
That's okay.
I wanted to facilitate that. I know that I'm certainly in favor, and I know all the concerns in the past and present. I'm in favor of raising the building, there doesn't seem to be any alternatives. I think, I'm not going to speak for everyone, but everyone else can chime in. Before you guys speak, it might help things. So, I'll start with Sylvia. Any thoughts on this initially?
Yeah, when I read the paper, I never thought about that building in relation to perhaps someone using it for other purposes, as was stated for security reasons in the paper. I never thought about it, that, and obviously it's being thought about in Rhode Island, across, not just this building, but security in general. Apparently, the state has a, I return to Barry, when you comment, maybe you, Barry Rich, maybe you're familiar with it. There's a state board or committee, it was in the news, that is going to look at all the schools for security reasons to see, and I guess everybody has to submit a plan. I'm not sure if they submit a plan to, but I think that, and of course, if the town is going to have to foot the bill for the whole thing, it would be part of our next budget segment, and we have to get a firm estimate. And obviously, things have changed. So, in order to know the cost, which we can work on when we do our next budget, what I'm thinking about is the original, the estimate that came in for the raising, and it was part of the, I'm trying to think of the name. It wasn't Pussono Mills, it was the schools, the schools architect that did the report. Yeah, Pussono Mills, that's the one, correct. So, we could take the budget where it was all, it was in there, whether it was a school use or another use, and the town could take that and give it to our engineers and have them look at it and come up with a new estimate. Because obviously, unfortunately, it costs a lot more than one hundred and thirty, whatever that amount was. So, that's something that we can do. And so, I realize that given the sad state of affairs with shootings, that this would be submitted as part, I assume by the school as a plan and perhaps with the town, to that state committee or board, open the department, and ask them for funding, maybe they'll come up with some funding. So, we've got time to work on the funding. So, I'll just say that I realize that we're going to have to deal with the building and take it down unless an angel comes by.
Yeah, I've always been in favor of having the nineteen oh four building removed, although I'm also in favor of salvaging anything we can from inside of it for all of the citizens. There are slate walls, there is the bell in the cupola. I'd love to see saved as a memorial, because we should memorialize it. It was a major, a wonderful school for so many citizens of Ashway, and God knows, we have generations of Ashway citizens who have come through it. So, I'd like to see it memorialized wherever we can. But I also think there are salvage companies that could go in because we have massive beams in there, the steps and a lot of copper. But I would like to save even a slate, one of the real slate, not fake slate. Really get one of those slates, boards off, and maybe, and yeah, and maybe put it in town hall. It's something so we can save part of that school for the citizens. But indeed, it does have to come down, and I'm sure we will work out a way to find a way.
Yeah, I'm with Barbara, actually the rest of the council, I believe. It's served a purpose, at one time, it was a wonderful building. It certainly, a lot of kids went through it and got a great education out of that building. However, it's passed and stays. It has the, the community, it's going down, all that. And I'm not going to tell you what kind of hazards it could be, but it could be a very much, several types of hazards, and I don't want to see that happen. Its proximity to the school, its proximity to houses in the neighborhood, and the fact that nobody's really keeping an eye on it except for occasional patrol goes by. But it's just asking for trouble, it's my fault for trouble. I'm with Barbara, I think there's a lot of stuff that could be salvaged in there. I think they've got, Barbara said the black woods, they've got the old black woods, not the green woods, the black woods. They've got some wonderful radiators in there. I mean, these things are massive. Now, how they're going to get them out, I don't know, but they're huge things. But things like that, the adjusted beams are there for all I know, from the old days. So, this, there's a possibility there's stuff to be salvaged out there. The bell, I don't know, I've never seen the bell, and it's a bell, and it's never going to ring. But yeah, it's a little bell too.
And then around the halloweum.
That's one of the reasons why the bell. So, I do, I do think it's a shame that we've got to take it down. I don't see any purpose for it. Couple of years ago, we discussed this on Intimitum, and just, and we tried, we tried to hire a realtor to look at the thing and see what she could do, and that fell through. I gave, Thomas Sylvia wanted it, give it six months, and I said, okay, I'll go along with it for six months, and people looked lucky for doing it, but I did. So, and nothing happened, we just couldn't find a use for it. It's a shame, structurally, I bet it's a really sound building inside, but it needs so much work, I mean, we've got asbestos in there, there's no elevators, there's no handicap access. So, it's going to go, it's going to cost, going to cost the taxpayers a bit of money to take it down, but it's going to go. And it's going to enhance, at the end of the Ashway school as it stands now, it's going to be more room up, up there in the front of it, if people were dying. There's lots of things for you to do with that space right now. So, that's what I feel about it, just as I felt two years ago.
I just have one more comment. Lori Aruda from Hopkinton Historic Association is doing the interviews with anyone who went to the nineteen oh four building. If you have grandparents or great-grandparents or aunts or uncles, if they could be in touch with her, she's starting to do the interviews that will be kept under a historic record. And she said people who went there, they mostly remember recess more than they remember school. So, so far, that's where we are. I think it'd be great if anyone does know anyone in the public who, from Westerly, from Charleston, wherever you are, that went to the nineteen oh four, we would love to have a historic record.
I'd like to see a gate set sometime before we start working the building by, that former students can take a little tour of the building for one last time and say, this is the classroom, and there was a terrible teacher, this is so-and-so, you know.
No, they want the chance. My kids are up there, they're Asian, wow. I don't know about that.
I never saw a school building where every teacher was a wonderful person. But, you know, I think we should have a tour, I think we should have a tour, this day be a Saturday from, you know, ten to twelve, you walk through the building, go to the classroom, the door, and all that, so that'd be nice too.
Tom, your turn, okay. As everybody knows, I've been against this since day one. I'm not in favor of tearing down history. It's like all over the country, history, our history of the United States is being torn apart. We've taken the prayer down, and it's pretty trince in school. It's stood there for us since nineteen fifty-four because one person was against it. My stomach is in knots right now because I love that school. I went through there, Ronnie went through there, our families all went through there. This building is structurally sound. It's been through the thirty-eight hurricane, it's still there. It's been through the fifty-four hurricane, Hurricane Carol, and every hurricane since then, and nothing's happened to that building. I'm not going to argue or put up a fight because before I got back on the council, this council had voted to tear the building down. When I got back on the council, we burned it up again, and I pushed and pushed and pushed. It's got to be something we can use it for. I heard from the residents back then, I thought there was, there were other uses for that building, certified kitchens and stuff like that. Now, I'm thinking of reasons to keep the building. I heard what the residents said. I'm a chess player, so I play devil's advocate. I'm always thinking other advantages come with it. Every time I hear it was school shooting, that's been coming up so much. People would call me concerning the nineteen oh four building, concerning that. Just to play devil's advocate, not to make everybody piss off. But where were these shooters in these schools? They were all inside the building. Most of them were inside the building. I haven't remembered anybody being outside the building shooting again. Two, the Ashway Elementary, the nineteen oh four building, yes, second floor. You've got a hill right behind that school, approximately the same distance away, that's leveled with the second floor. Security, you can't see who's coming. We'll put the Dan Candleys up in front of the building. These are my answers to your, to the statements that I've heard. I'm deeply concerned the way this country has turned out with the carelessness of food delivery. Back when I was in school, we'd go beat each other up, punch each other in the nose, and the next day we're best buddies again going out for a soda or an ice cream or something, down at the pages store. Times have changed. Two things, see, the school is the one who I hear is mostly pushing to tear the building down. I would request that the chairman of high school, if you understand this, pay for half of the raising of that building. The second part is a mandatory issue with me. And I will raise so much of a stink to get this part done. Once that building is torn down, the footprint of that building will be grasped in. It will not be made a parking lot. I would expect maybe a... I would expect maybe a gazebo put out on that grassed area, so someplace the kids can go and have an outdoor activity. In fact, when I went to school, we went up on the hill, there used to be a nature trail. It's still there?
It's still there.
After school, we used to go into dumpsters, grab the biggest piece of cardboard, put it on that nature trail, and slide down under leaves all the summer long. Try to get a kid outside off of his fingers right now. So, I'm not gonna put up a big stink, like I said, I can't believe that I'm agreeing with this, um, I won't vote in favor of it, but I won't put up, uh, a wall to push the start of the building. I did get an email today from a woman that lived at school in nineteen fifty-four, I believe she's from Arizona. My brother called me from Missouri. So people keep an eye on what's going in the town where we grew up, we're proud of where we grew up, that's why I sit here on this town council. I love this town, I grew up here, I can show you places to go trout fishing, that you wouldn't even pick your trout, I can take you places to go squirrel hunting, that you don't even know they're there. So, to, to, to take history, to remove it, I mean, you come to my sugar house, and you just look at the walls, there's E and T's everywhere, I just, I love old architecture, and there's a lot of nice architecture. And I was speaking to Bill, and there's a place in Pennsylvania, uh, I can't remember, Restoration Dogs or something, I used to be on TV years ago, uh, maybe it still is, I just haven't got the chance to watch it anymore. They would come in and take the structural stuff, anything that's valuable, and they would pay the town X amount of dollars for that stuff. That is what I would look to, like Barbara said, um, to, to do that, so that stuff can be repurposed, uh, to, to throw in the dump, that would, that would kill me. But as far as the grass area, I will fight you tooth and nail if you try to put one inch of blacktop on that perimeter. Other than that, that's all I gotta say.
Okay, Tom, um, also too, just so folks know, uh, we did not budget any money for the raising of this building, it sounds like we've got a fairly decent consensus on the matter, although it's not budgeted, uh, for this next fiscal year, starting July one, so it would have to be held off till the next July one, but, um, that's the reality of the money piece of it, but, um, but I agree with Tom, maybe there's something, uh, the school administration can do that'd help us offset some of the costs too, but, uh, we'll deal with that, I guess, as it progresses. Any council have anything else?
One more question. Just Dave, you made me laugh when you said it's time to go out to pasture. You know, when my mom gets all the love.
I know.
When my mom gets all the love, I'm not just gonna stick her in a home and put her out to pasture. It was just a little.
Yeah. If there's a use for older buildings, older structures, older monuments, older anything, and, and, and I, I live in a, I live in a house that was built in eighteen sixty, sixty-five, Magic of the Woods, I love it, it's a nice old house, and there's a use for my house, uh, I'm, I'm living there, and I, I fixed it up so it's modernized inside, and that's, and, and therein lies the difference, certain things, if you, if you go to England or Scotland or something like that, you see the ruins, well, the ruins were ruins, because it was never any use for them after a certain period of time, and they filmed this, and all you have, have now are the stone walls and stuff like that, the roof's gone, everything else is gone, so, I don't wanna see the Ashway, the old Ashway, the old school building, school building, going, turning into a ruin, you know? Uh, in the meantime, something bad could happen, if, yeah, and you wanna remember things that could happen, uh, it's true, if, if, it's not gonna happen, anyhow, so there's a difference between, yeah, keep, keep something that's really nice and old, and it has a use, and keep something that's really old and doesn't have use anymore, and it is, it's kind of a way, I hate to say that, that's what it is, the big thing. Uh, I agree though, I think we should salvage as much as possible for, um, you know, and I would like that, um, we get, we get it off to the paper, take the last block.
Tom, one more comment. One last comment, another reason why I'm so passionate about the Ashway Elementary School, the house that I live in was built in eighteen fifty-four, that was the boarding house for the Hopkinton Academy, which was right directly across the street, was the parish house of the church, Southern Baptist Church, um, employed a nineteen year, four, all four buildings, that building. The headmaster's house, um, some of these people have been here a longer time, Ernesto Means, uh, next door to my house, that was the headmaster's house for the Hopkinton Academy.
That's where they had the auctions.
The auctions on Wednesday nights at seven o'clock, correct.
I go to Wednesday.
Never missed it. Um, so just, that's another reason why, I mean, their house has significance, you have the, the school system. Kids would stay at my, my house, um, they'd come in from all the winters, and stay there for, for, during the week, go to school, and then go back to their homes after that. So that's, that's all I have to say, that's it. Chief, Ron Spazaro, you are, I guess, I think the council's all set, you wanna just weigh in on some of the comments, and I guess that, you, you were asked to speak to them on behalf?
I was asked to speak for the safety of the building. You guys seem like you pretty much made up your mind, which was good. I'm with Tommy, there is nostalgia to me as well, I, I went kindergarten, who walked in that building, then we got to go to the movies.
Yes.
And it, and it was good back then, but anyway. I mean, unfortunately, without anything else being able to be done in that building, that is the single biggest fire hazard in the whole town of Hockington, not just the Ashway end, and the reason being, the proximity to the, the new building, the lack of water, the lack of sprinkler system in that building. Uh, we do have a pre-plant plan for it if something happens, uh, it, the first alarm in that building brings in twenty-plus trucks, uh, 'cause that's what we would need, throw enough water to protect the new building. And just so people understand, uh, I know everybody says, well, that's made out of brick, well, it's true, it is, but there's combustibles inside, and a fire of that magnitude would produce heat on that building in excess of a thousand degrees. So, if that building really got going, our chances of saving both of the buildings is soon and done, depending on the weather.
Why don't you maybe wanna talk about the vinyl side and the outside of the building also?
Well, the vinyl side that holds heat, which doesn't hurt.
It also, maybe it's not just gases?
Yep.
Always has gases.
Unfortunately, I think you, you guys came up with a consensus, I'm with Tommy, I'd love to see it repurposed, but there's really, this has been kicked down six, seven years, Tom?
Yeah.
And, and it just isn't anything practical, it would be, be better. Now, going with Tommy and the footprint, what would be nice is if they could move the gym over to there, the double gym that's on the side of the building, into that area when it does go out, that would need more room for fire trucks to come in for the other end.
I'm just saying. How do you see that?
Yeah, yeah. It'd be safer now, it'd be safer 'cause it's in the middle.
Yeah, but that building's gonna be gone, so you won't have a fire anymore.
The, the new one, I keep calling it the new one, it was built in the sixties. Any questions on that? I mean, you guys pretty much made up your mind, it's a little like we have to sell too hot now.
We don't wanna do it, but we have to do it.
No, I'm with Tommy, I mean, I went there the whole time for sixth grade, you know?
Your brother and I had a good fight, right, between the two buildings?
Oh, no, that was good.
In both, we were talking to Lori Aruda and putting in your writing.
Tommy, Tommy's my brother's age, so he's about three years older.
Yeah.
We all went there, it's quite, so I can even remember the, the four teachers that I had in that building, not the kindergarten one, I can't remember that.
Mrs. Denelli.
This is, uh...
Swicki.
Swicki was third grade.
This is Stuart. This is Strand. Strand and Dan.
Were the old ones?
Mr. Peacock, great principal.
I see, I still see you two.
Oh, yeah, well, his, uh, best of Peacock's son is fired from Watch Hill now.
Oh, really?
Yeah, all day with us.
Thanks, Mike.
Standpoint.
All history.
All right, um, all right, so, everyone wants to go, Mike? Just take, wanna, just try and keep your comments, so a couple of minutes if you can, please.
Yeah.
Good evening, council, Michael Geer, two twenty-nine Ashway Road, Bradford. First of all, I, I concur with Councilor Thompson and Councilman Buck, it is, in, in America right now, we're seeing things go away that shouldn't because of political views or whatever it may be. Same way with my high school, Tommy, I graduated with Hanson Regional High School in Witten, Mass, nineteen eighty-two grade, Parkland, Davie, went back there fifteen later, fifteen years later, it's gone. All the woods we used to ride, ponies on, dirt bikes, all that, they took it and they shoved a brandy spool back, so I concur with that. You know, the other big thing too, is we're gonna look at too, and I, I agree with the teachers here, and most of them do too, it's a, it's a hazard right here, I think. School safety should be priority one, let's open it up so we can get a good look, see what's going on, and go from there, and this way, you know, we'll feel safe, we've done the right thing. Mr. President, councilors?
Thank you, Mike. Next up, folks, please.
My name is Claire Orberg, I'm a fourth grade teacher in Ashway, and we all appreciate your meeting about this tonight and considering our children's safety. The staff of Ashway understand the historic and sentimental value of the nineteen oh four building, and we want to help preserve those memories for future generations in Ashway. I want to assure you that never in any conversation has there ever been talk of either putting a parking lot or even extending our playground. In fact, many of us began our careers here teaching or studying in that building, some of us were Ashway students and attended the schools in nineteen, in the nineteen oh four building. We enjoy the large classrooms, the beautiful woodwork, the high ceilings. Unfortunately, as we look at it every day, we see those memories literally crumbling before us. If the building were to come down, we would like to work with the town, our PTO, and our students to create a green area for people to come and remember. We envision a placard memorializing the importance of the location, the bell, benches, a garden, perhaps the kubla, or the beautiful, um, weather vane at the top of the building, that we all love and appreciate, a place that the town could be proud of, and that would hold the historic significance of that nineteen oh four building. So, I don't feel like we really need to appeal to you, but I do want, for those people who are potentially against this idea, as, as the people who care for the children of Ashway seven hours a day, who would protect them from danger as if they were our own children, consider the safety of our students, consider, consider the horrible events that have happened in our country, and consider taking this much-needed step to keep those children of Ashway safe. Please consider agreeing to take down that nineteen oh four building. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chief David Plummer, I want to applaud the council, um, I've been on the safety meeting, uh, with the police, uh, for, for several years, and we, uh, have spoken at once over this, I believe strongly you're making the right decision, I certainly understand Councilman Buck's, uh, concern for history, nostalgia, uh, but school safety, uh, takes over. I have officers that go through there at least three times a, a day during, during school session there, which means they drive through, you get out of the car, you walk through the, the hallways, taking down that, uh, building will give them the access when they're driving by fifteen times to be able to see the, the building, that's very important. Secondly, in, in a more minor aspect is, over the last few years, uh, we've had, we've arrested eight people that have vandalized inside there, most of them are juveniles, uh, the proximity makes it very enticing for them to go in there, and that's not gonna, that's not gonna change, so I applaud you, as I think you've made the decision, I think is a, a very wise one.
Thanks, Chief, appreciate it.
Good evening, councilors, persons, my name is Pamela Grills, um, I am a resident, a taxpayer, and a former student of Ashway, as many of you are. I also care very deeply about the history of our community, as did my family. Um, if you don't recognize my last name, um, my father is the late Richard Grills, who also believes in preservation, conservation, and saving our history. I actually had a conversation about this very topic prior to, maybe five months prior to his death, and it's funny, I carry his car with me tonight to remind me of why I stand here. He actually had been approached, some of you may know this or may not, I know many people here probably do not, we were asked to come and help, whether it be financially or what have you, but it involved my father. I asked him specifically, Dad, is there any work you want me to help continue, 'cause he, we knew he was going. And he said, I think I've done everything I can, I leave it to you, the next generation. There is a time for history and us to preserve history, however, there is a time where our future needs to take precedence. These children that we are raising are the future council members, they are our future doctors, lawyers, they are the taxpayers of tomorrow. If we do not put them and our teachers and staff's safety first, then we should be ashamed I also have the unique perspective, everyone was sitting here talking about having homes that are old, my father restored a home that was built in sixteen eighty-four, it's the oldest in Hopkinton, or one of, and he's been asked, or had been asked, forgive me that, um, to have it put on the historical register, and we chose not to for a very fact that we'd have to open up and allow people to come in, and we're kind of private folk, but the house still exists, the house is still being used, and, and a third generation of Grillses is being raised in that home. So, please believe me when I tell you I care about history, that's why I moved back to Molly, North Carolina, this is my home, this is where I was raised, this is where I'm raising my daughter. So, I thank you so much for listening to me this evening, and I really hope, especially about Councilman Buck. I can see us doing our very best to memorialize the memories that we all share and the beauty of the history, because it is part of who we are, but our children come first, they are the future for us, and God forbid, if the worst ever happened, we would never forgive ourselves. Thank you for your time. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is, uh, Robert Rick, uh, I lived in Ashway at Three Stars Church Street. As a young child growing up, I did that Ashway school from nineteen forty to nineteen fifty-seven, attended Wesley High, and I now live in Old Rattler. I would like to say I feel a little bit of love for nineteen oh four school. And the school is part of Hopkinton's history, she is in remarkable shape for her age, she stood through seven of eight wars, and stood wistfully in her hail, as well as every hurricane since nineteen oh four. I've ed- had educated many children in its hundred and fourteen years, and this is the thanks I get to Emmy Downs, because of the fear of an intruder getting inside the nineteen oh four building and do harm to the children outside. I do like, I do not like living in fear, I believe all of the past shootings were after the intruder was already inside the school occupied by children, not from a vacant building, if the school committee or the town tears the school down, you know where they are going to get the money from us taxpayers, yes, us taxpayers. I would hate to see the school torn down, it's being realistic, you're not living in Okay, shall we clear up the woods so a shooter cannot plant a turret? Shall we put razor wire around the perimeter? Shall we put razor wire around the perimeter to stop the intruders? Maybe we should put an air missile to take out the drones. Yes, I said, what happened in these other schools. Happened in these other schools, but if you realize it, then let's not live in fear. Just a few memories of my days attending the 1904 school. I remember riding an old bus from Ashway School to Old Valley because there was no 6th grade national. In the 8th and 9th grade, the janitor would let me ring the bell for helping him move chairs and stuff at the school, so he could wax the floors. In the belfry, there was a three-inch rope attached to the bell, it went through a hole in the ceiling, through a hole in the second floor, to the first floor, so the janitor could ring the bell for me to floor. In the 9th grade, I was in the safety patrol. We were like crossing guards. I remember the time when Mrs. Danning showed us, us kids, how to make new canoes out of cranes by putting the cranes on the windowsill and letting the sun soak in them, so we could shake them into canoes. In the basement, there is a stage where many plays were put on, as well as minstrels put on when they actually ran into the fire department. I had a man with a playground, one of the way my sister Jeanne was pushing me out of the swing, it was too hot, and I fell off. I put my bottom teeth through my bottom lip, lots of blood, but I survived. Lots of good memories, and some not to be, which I will not mention.
Thanks a lot. Scott?
Scott Billhurst, 20 people called Ashway, and we'd say I attended Ashway Elementary School from kindergarten to 6th grade. Didn't have middle school in those days entirely at the old Ashway School, three generations. The first family went to Ashway Elementary School, I think the younger generation certainly went to went to the new school. And my aunt, Jeanne Danning, my father's older sister, who was a teacher, we had decades. I never had her, but she was much beloved. But the thing is, what really concerns me, I'm not really in favor of tearing down the school, but I am running the town council, and I also have to make practical decisions based on rational thought. Although rationality does not coincide with emotion and those type of things. The regrettable thing is that some people have no sentimentality. It's either strictly money or their self-serving interest in money. Those people are poor for having that attitude, I just want to say that. The thing is, about the Terro school district, I remember years ago, and I was trying to think of, Mr. Orson came over to the school committee at the time, a year ago, and they had a choice between allowing some money to go to Ashway School or the Charleston School and the Coast Charleston School. And I've been trying to remember when that happened. What really concerns me the most, as town moderator this time, we had an annual financial town assembly on May 4th. And I wrote a letter to try to get people to come, it was published in Wesley Sun and the Terro Times, and we didn't have a big attendance. And that's the time for people to speak to their town government, and participate in their town government. If you had that type of concern, that's the way you should have been. And he wasn't there. You know, I bet a lot of the people who didn't come to the financial town assembly, because wasn't many there, they did show up probably at the annual financial district meeting at Terro Hall. And you have to set priorities. And the town of Hockington spends more of its tax dollars on the Terro school district as well as the other two towns than what they spend on general government. And that has to be pointed out, and fully appreciated, and that dislets service, and I would fully appreciate it. And I hope the Hockington members from the school committee take note of that particularly. I would like to say that a lot of stuff has been said about the cost of tearing down the building, but we should have a perspective from the different perspectives. Building, the building department, the police, and the chief has spoke. The finance office about the cost. The fire chief, Spadato, spoke. School authorities and the Hockington historical association, I know Lori, you're a local valley, but I know she's obviously gonna have an effort to interview people associated with that school. But, you know, I gotta say two things before I sit down. You know, I work as a people greeter in Walmart, and I have to be security conscious because of that job. And I know, and they teach us, and we have to see videos on active shooter training and all those type of things. And I'm very conscious of security-type measures. I can't say I work in security, but my job is very observant and things of that nature. I do have to see videos. And I can't speak officially from Walmart, but that's part of the concern that I have to do in doing my job. But what really concerns me is if I were an active shooter, and I was looking at the actual school property, the closest proximity I think would be to All Lady Victory Church parking lot. That parking lot is so close to the school, it has access off Group 3, and you have less visibility than you would if you went to the Hillside Avenue entrance of that. And I guess there's a fence there now, but that's, I think, a potential that should be looked at. I would hope that the school committee, if they haven't, has looked at the security aspect of all the school property in the school district. And I note that, I was thinking about the Wesley school system, how close those buildings are, like Wesley High School is closer to the street than the new Ashway Elementary School is to Hillside Avenue. And one of the things, and I always find it curious, because I did mention, was the annual financial town assembly, which people could have came and they could have advocated for one, if so, including. And like I said, I have an emotional attachment, so it's very tough. Because if the Ashway schools, the old Ashway schools comes down, part of me will die. And part of me, and many other people, and I'm sure Tom Park, and I know Lisa, like that, and people that really have a heart in Ashway, a part of us will die. Not literally, but emotionally. And if you possess those emotions or you don't. But, the final, okay, the last final thing is, for years I've advocated for a miniature study of Terro, identify cost savings. And the problem is, if you could do that, or be willing to do that, you could identify funds to do things like raiding buildings and things like that. Now, maybe legally, since the town owns the building, maybe legally it's our responsibility, and we don't legally have a claim for the school property to do something. But let's see how that progresses. But that's all I have to say.
Thanks. That's okay. Appreciate you.
I'd like to say one thing. I appreciate people not coming up to the mic, and I'm sure the police chief were also, appreciate this, and not suggesting different ways that people could do bad things around Ashway School. All right? I don't want to hear about mountains at the back, and trees, and how high, you know, I don't want to hear that. Can we limit that conversation to something other than the best possible way to curtailing Ashway School?
I just love the microphone, so. Good evening, everyone. My name is Gina Lee, and I am a kindergarten teacher at Ashway Elementary School. I am also a Hockington resident, the wife of the fire chief, and most importantly, a mother of three boys. So, I kind of understand it from all different, you know, aspects. I am happy to share my concerns, like you already addressed, about the 1904 school building. While I understand and appreciate, from Scott Billhurst and everyone, the the safety, I mean, hold on, I just made my mistake. While I understand and appreciate the historical and architectural significance of the 1904 building, I have concerns about safety and the impact it has on our school. It has been vacant for quite some time, it's been unsafe by the fire department and everything, and it's close proximity to existing school, the poor physical condition, along with the obstruction. I chose to become an educator because I have a passion for teaching and learning. I love this community as well, I chose to bring my kids up here. But we already, as educators, have a worry. We have 20 kids in our classroom that we are, you know, making sure are safe, educating them, giving them academic rigor. We've got so many things on our plate. So, just by you agreeing to just take this one added, you know, worry away from us would be such a huge thing for us. And I speak from my heart for that. I really do love this community. I grew up in Westerly, but yeah, I moved over the border, and Charro, Charro, or Tita Pickers, you know, I was a wolf dog.
Do you still call us that?
No, not anymore, not anymore.
No more, now we're turf?
No, you guys are held, thanks to Mr. Ritchie and our whole staff, like, we're all held more accountable and higher, as a higher regard than Westerly, I feel. Don't put that on the record. So, again, and like I said, we all love what Claire said, we love what we do, but we are in charge of your children, all the kids in this community for seven-plus hours a day. And we just don't need any more on our plate, so we would be so, you know, glad to not have to worry about that. And like you were saying, we have to face the horrific tragedies that are going on. People are coming up with creative ways all the time. So, if we can just eliminate, you know, some, and the police department's been awesome, those police are walking through, we appreciate that. That makes us feel good and better, the kids know it. And they feel good and they learn. So, please consider our concerns and help us, as we will help you, to provide our children the safest learning environment possible. Thanks again.
Thanks, girl. Anyone else?
Hey, everyone, this is Emma Russo, Hockington resident of Ashway, and member of the Terro School Committee, and I'm also an appointee to the Ashway School Safety Team. So, just one point and a couple suggestions, and I'll be on my way. So, Sylvia, you were mentioning a state report, and for obvious reasons of safety and security, we can't really talk about that too much. But I did want to confirm to you that we did have an all-hazard site safety state evaluation in 2015. It's done every three years. I always remember that team, as was Captain Carrier, Chief Palmer, Ashway Fire Administration, et cetera, et cetera. And it was noted and documented in that report to the state that the 1904 building encompassed the concerns you heard tonight and the ones that you've recognized this evening, so we'll leave that there.
Who did you send that report to, is it right, or?
No, it's not right, it's actually, it's the state's safety. I mean, the chief Palmer can say if there's a particular person you want to know who's received it, but so that was conducted. So, that piece aside, some suggestions, because we feel like we're all in the same spot, and you've heard the concerns. You, as a taxpayer, I can say that one thing I appreciate very much from the council is that you've been excellent financial stewards of our tax dollars the past four years that I've been a school committee member and the time that I've lived here. I know you take very seriously how you spend our tax dollars, and you take great care in where you allocate those funds. Like examples would be, you save for projects rather than bond them up or take out loans, right? I appreciate that as a taxpayer. So, given the magnitude of this and the climate, it may be a suggestion to consider to maybe reallocate some of the money that you have so thoughtfully saved already towards the Crandall Playground, which we really wanted, and we came to about, and also the beautification project for the town hall, important things to do. But since we're working with some fiscal constraints, maybe you can consider partnering and maybe looking at some of those funds. And I was asking you to refurbish the Crandall Playground, but again, we all have priorities. At least we have Langworthy that's up, Joja Corelli brought in that lab, well, let's not say his name. We're on the Today Show, and so there's at least a couple of brand-new, beautiful playgrounds going up in Hockington, so maybe now, when we look at the whole context, some of those funds could be shifted over to begin the project. The other suggestion I have for you is to maybe this evening, as a show of good faith, because all of us, including myself, may or may not be here in these seats in November, to maybe form a subcommittee or a task force, you have interested members of the community that are willing to work and help you. And if you did something like a subcommittee or a task force, between this July 1 and next July 1, 2019, you could get some substantial work done and show good faith. Like, somebody on that task force could reach out to whatever agencies or groups or historians or architects salvage the material and take out the copper. There could be things we're starting to do in between leaving it standing completely as is and raising it to the ground. And we could get a lot done over this next year, which I think would mean a lot to everybody to see some progress. So, not only would I recommend that, but I would volunteer to serve in any way that you need, either as a taxpayer or as an Ashway Safety Team member, whenever your committee needs it, be willing to do that. And I think I'll leave on that note.
Just to say, you know, Lisa, we picked budget for, I forget how much it was, was it 30,000 or 40,000, Crandall Field Playground? This new fiscal year, so that money has been allocated. As long as the town's voters approve it in June.
Yeah, I plan on voting for the budget.
And a tour, yeah.
Right, yeah, I'll be voting for the budget.
Okay, thanks. Anyone else? You want me to respond to your, if you agree? Yeah, Ron, Ron, you have?
I'm very shy.
Okay, great, watch it out.
So shy, we're never gonna know, we're scared. I'm Ron Proits, and to send me mainstream, the people who don't know. Mr. Hudson asked me in my interview, during my interview for the planning board, if I've lived in this community my whole life. I said, "Not yet." Looking at that, it's now, you're not gonna be in here for quite a while. So, which is scary, he's gonna have a blackboard next to my name because I took such an advantage. Anyway, I agree with Councilman Buck, to tear down history is borderline criminal, but sometimes it has to be done. Chief Palmer made valid, with very good points, Chief Spadato from the fire department made the same points. The reason I'm speaking now is to ask the question, is there a possibility, or has there been a committee or something along those lines for people to survey the demolition of the building, to preserve everything that we can preserve, whether it's the light cords, the bell, the cupola? There's organizations that will come from foreign countries even to buy those kind of things. American Pickers comes to mind, they've been to this community, and there's been other TV shows. There's a lot of stuff that people like that, it's all set to cost.
Yeah, that would ultimately be included in the RFP when we send it out to bid. So, we can make sure that we did that, because it may offset some of the costs.
And as the town council knows, as a retired bill writer, I hold a restaurant rigger's license. So, when people come in and say, "Well, we're just gonna break this and dig it up." No, there's lots of good ways to do things to preserve the history and move forward. Thank you.
Thanks, hon. Yes, Pamela.
Chuck, was it for a while? Chuck, was it for a while? So, thank you. I know this is not an easy thing for you to do, it's gonna be hard for the community, but I did want to respond to a couple of comments that were made, to make sure you have accurate information. First, Councilman Buck, you still do good in fights. They face the shake hands, they're finally, they say.
They still do that?
They still do that. This happened last Thursday. Yes, that's still low enough. The safety assessment that, I remember Emma Russo referred to every fight, every three years. So, every school has a safety assessment done, it is submitted to the state. We have to document it to the department, that it's been done, but it's a local assessment, and there's no money behind it. There's no, you have a problem, there's no money to fix it, that's just not happening. So, it's exercise to go through, and then we, every school, I think, Scott asked about safety plans. Every school does have a safety plan developed locally for that school. It's regressed with the police departments, and we can take it in to security upgrades in all of the buildings. This initiative tonight was grassroots. It was not initiated from the school department, from me, I wholeheartedly support it. Of course, at a level, but it doesn't have the endorsement of the school committee, they have not been involved. The school department has not behind it, and my involvement has been, you know, what is the process we should go through? I think the challenge going forward will be to preserve the memory of the 1904 building. And I know for a fact that these teachers and parents are very persistent. I'm gonna corral them tonight and get them to work, because they are very interested in doing just that for you. They are, there is no plan, the parking lot, it's all lot, it's your property. We can rent a parking lot if you want. So you control everything about that, that parcel of plan, because it won't be the time. So I'm willing to help in any way possible, and fully assuming our task force, if that's helpful. It's gonna be, I'll be, I'll support you as I can.
Okay, very nice.
Barry, where, what is that report, the safety, where, where does that go, when we send out new safety report every three years?
There's a, the state police actually have a unit that looks at them.
Oh, okay.
I can't tell you that it's-
It's within the state police?
Executed really well. We don't get feedback on the plan, so we rely on the local chief, the local police and fire, and our own, we have a safety coordinator in house. So we feel like we have a good handle on, on what to do. I mean, the funding is not always there, as you probably know, but, you know, it's a, it's a local, because these, these security measures are local measures. No one's going to impose on a single school, you know, a state-wide security plan. It just doesn't work that way. So everything, every school has a unique plan for itself.
So when they've had issues, they communicated to the chief? Like, you've changed the way people come in and what door, and-
I, I will tell you that the-
Did they tell you to do that?
No, no, that's local.
So what does this, what good is the safety if they never respond back, or they do it to the chief?
They, what good is it is that it forces towns and school departments to look at it, the safety threats and nature problems.
But they don't tell you whether it's okay or not?
There's no response. We, we are actually asking for a response from them, but they are, they are helpful to us in other ways, but right now-
Obviously, if there's a problem, they communicate it.
Even pre, even preventive ways. Any questions to me?
No, but I'd also like to thank everyone for coming, especially those of you who are teachers and staff, because it wasn't just the students being injured. Right. And you really are protecting the children with yourselves, and it is greatly, it was quite a blessing to this community that you're willing to do so. It's awful. But thank you all for coming, especially for all the comments from all the teachers and staff.
I have a question from the-
Yeah, Ritchie.
Why is that plan only every three years? Why is it not a living plan? It can be updated every-
It can be updated, it's local, so it can be updated anytime we want to, and we do, but it's requirement, it's a legislative requirement, it's complete one every three years. The, the safety plan is annual, updated annually, as needed.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Lisa.
Uh, could I respond if, um-
To Ron?
Yes, should I go there or can you?
No, you can.
Okay. So, um, I, I think it's a little mysterious, I want to just elaborate on that, because I've had the opportunity these four years to be on the Ashway and the middle school teams. We're talking about the safety, the safety plans as the document, but the process to get to that, as Mr. Ritchie was saying, is just as important, because the process is where we do the set, the safety assessments. But within that, outside of that document, there's actually constant and repetitive safety drills, right? So there's evacuation procedures, there's active shooter drills, there's lockdown procedures, and those are being done and evaluated several times every school year. And other administrators, school committee members are invited to attend those as outsiders and watch the procedure, observe it, and provide feedback to the administrators. I just went to the, went to an evacuation drill at the middle school, and was able to provide direct feedback to the principal about the, how well it was implemented and effective. So we're talking about the plan, and it feels so detached from what we're doing, but then there are all these other safety measures and drills, even including drills that are intentionally obstructed in each school to force the staff and the students without notice, how to take alternative routes that are also predetermined. So it's pretty comprehensive what's happening within the buildings to keep the students safe every day.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on the 1904? Yes, may have.
Well, ordinary.
Say your name, please.
Uh, so my name is Jessica Swain.
Uh, Kate Swain, seventeen, outside.
Right, so we live directly across the street. Mr. Buck is our neighbor, our back neighbor. So it's a beautiful building. My daughter lives across the street at that school, my older daughter went to school at the new building. They play in that yard, and there's debris, there's constant debris. There are kids constantly over there climbing up the building, there are kids constantly over there playing around. After their hurricanes, there was side that fell off. There are windows that are shared, like breaking into the, the area, that the kids are surrounded in. If you park in a front parking lot, and you're walking through the walkway in front of the building to the back of the new building, there is glass, there is stuff there. So the kids do have the potential to have cuts, they do have the potential to have leg poisoning, they do have the potential to have water issues as well. My daughter has that, I have that, I walk there. I'm not a professional therapist, I'm in the medical field, I see that, it's not good. You don't want that. I see wounds, they're terrible. You don't want those either. I don't want that for my children. The other thing, as a neighbor, I am terrified to hear that you need to have twenty fire trucks come.
That's only on the first of August.
My house is on that road. My house is a, is a wooden house with horsehair walls.
Your house, under the right conditions, is in danger as well.
That freaks me out.
Right, sorry.
Holy cow, right? So that, that, as the neighbor across the street, my father too houses that, that really makes me so very nervous. That is eye-opening. That terrifies me just as much.
Good job, you got a great fire department.
Oh, no.
Yes, and a great, mutually.
It's true, mutually, it shows a lot of that.
And you guys do fire drills, I, I see them all the time, they're like, ooh, ten of them, you know, we're saving the place, we're trying to watch it. And I'm, I'm happy to see that. I'm also happy that you guys want to keep things. It's beautiful, keep it, but not the building. Me, I am also on committee for the school to, you know, put a new playground in the school. I'm looking into grants, I'm looking into funds, I'm looking into new items. It was never a thought to put a playground there. It was never thought to do anything other than memorialize what the building was. That's what we want, that's what I want, that's what my children want. And I believe that's what the teachers want, because we sat in for the PTO meetings. I go to the PTO meetings, I'm part of it. It is back to the history, though. I've had many patients who have lived in Ashway. Some of them do want to keep this. Most of them do not. Most of them know how unsafe it is. That's hard. And so I'm not even thinking of active shooter, because that scares me as well, and I don't want to think about that. I'm thinking of the safety of the town. But I'm thinking, yeah, let's keep it beautiful, let's keep it and put it somewhere different. Twenty, twenty.
And we've seen how bad a street gets when we have our bizarre. I just, I just wanted to mention that, you know, putting another voice in favor of what seems to be your decision going forward. We stood up here about a year ago to discuss possible often uses. Several of our neighbors on the street came to voice their opinions. They're still all of the same opinion, and we've got one street poster, so. It's, it's just something that, you, you still have your memories, the history still exists, it's still going to be documented, there's clearly going to be a plan to memorialize it. So the memories aren't lost, the history isn't lost, the physical structure, unfortunately, there's, there's just nothing else. As has been proven in the ten years plus that we've lived across the street, there is no viable alternative for that building in that location at this time, to keep it around for something that you might be able to use in the future. You know, the risks are just simply too great. So that's that. Also, can I, can I talk to the zoning department about air missiles in my backyard?
Anyone else?
Right.
Just one thing, but I, I've heard a couple of people say, "Save the bell." The bell's already been saved in the cement, in front of the building. But I heard all the people say that we needed to save that, that's already been done.
Well, considering the position we're in here.
It might need to be taken care of, but they've already taken the effort to save it. And that's been there what, Tommy, forty years?
I don't know, we stole it back in, in eighty-two?
Yeah, we did that after you, so. Statue of Liberty, it's over on that chief.
We played back after Halloween.
Okay, anyone else wishing to hear something? Okay, thank you for all your comments and suggestions. You guys, I'm just gonna make note of this, you don't have to certainly stay. The, the third item under new business, I'd asked the police department to kind of weigh in on the new law that's coming due June 1, I believe. Has to do with hands-free cell phones. I have a very old vehicle, has no Bluetooth, and I'm, I'm challenged by the way this law's kind of been created as to how I'm gonna be able to talk in front of it. So first, we're gonna talk, take up number two, so if you want to stay for that, please do. The second item of the new business is discussed, considered, vote, authorize a hundred dollar T sponsor, donation from the town council, line item, five zero six five dash zero zero one, to sponsor a team to support and contribute to it for June 2nd, 2018, Hockington Police Department, I think, the ultimate law at my eyes. Okay, motion made in the second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you. Next item?
I appreciate your agenda, but there's about twenty of us here, we were just wondering if you were going to actually vote on this this evening?
It's not on the agenda to vote, I'm just in discussions, but we have a consensus, I think you've kind of got to just, yeah.
And of course, and it can't be timed out tomorrow, but the next budget cycle. Okay, so the next time this would come up is after? Uh, February, February 2018, uh, nineteen, excuse me. Yeah, February, when we have our new budget. We, I mean, the next-
Yeah, I mean, there are things we can do.
In the meantime, sure. There might be things you can do in the meantime.
The money's-
I think as a taxpayer, just kind of want to know what the follow-up would possibly be, and notification to us as the taxpayer.
Just look for the agenda items, I guess, but like I said, the money, like I said initially, is not in this fiscal year's budget.
Understood.
So it has to be next July.
And that's when you would have to go with? No, no, that's when we'd have the budget.
Budgetary sessions begin in February.
Okay.
There's also, as far as I'm concerned, now, I can't speak for the council, as far as I'm concerned, we can do this step by step. We could ask for proposals, RPs, for the, the historic stuff that's in there.
The list would expire.
Uh, well, it might expire, but we, we could ask for somebody to come in there, take a look at the stuff that we want to save, apartments, if they want to buy from us, and we can get that stuff out of there before we ask for an RFP for the demolition of the building.
Why don't we just share you that if there's anything we can do for July 1st, 2019? We will. Okay, and the, the second follow-up question from the group was that there was a mention of subcommittee?
We'll talk about it.
Who, what? We don't do subcommittees, we work, all of us, on things. So we are the sub- No, subcommittee residents that was brought up. We have to absorb everything that came tonight and-
And then ultimately, I'll put something on the agenda, if that's the direction we want to go in. That was a suggestion by school committee, Marissa, I think.
Okay.
So, yeah, if we want to go in that direction, I'll put it on the agenda, we'll vote on it, we'll discuss it, and then we'll send it forward.
Great. You guys think? But we can notify the school principal, and then the principal could, you know, pass it on to you. There's always ways to do it. We just, we're not, we're not on, so forgive us, thank you.
Justin, most of, a lot of the teachers know me, I mean, I will get in touch with them.
We don't have to find you, Tom. Especially in February, March, you know, that'd be weird.
You'll always come find me.
Next on the new business, number three, presentation on the round.
I encourage all the teachers to stay, and I promise I'll only be about five or seven minutes here, but this is an important-
I didn't even want to read the cell phone news.
This is about year three, and I think that getting this out to the message to some of your parents, I think will be beneficial. But I want to thank the, the town councils for asking me to put this on the agenda, so.
Chief, how can we do it without you in this home?
That's what I'm trying to tell you. That's what I'm trying to tell you how to do it. So, recognize that it's gonna go into, into effect on June, June 1, and the do's and don'ts are this, is basically if you, if you are listening to your phone or you're talking to your phone, and it's in your hand, that is, that is illegal. And if it's in the proximity of your ear, that is honor facing, that you will be charged. First offense is a hundred dollars, second offense a hundred and fifty, third offense two hundred and fifty, then you're open for suspension of your license. The, the mentality behind the whole thing is this, and I try and put this out to you is, I recognize that they're trying to take the phone out of your hand, but the real mentality that I think the legislation is trying to get to the public is that distracted driving isn't just the phone being in your hand. Phone takes your hand, so you can only use, you're staring at it all with one hand. But I think the message really needs to be announced to the public is that, that any type of driving with a phone in your hand is distracting. And you don't have to be a police officer to recognize that. You drive, you drive, drive to work, you drive to school, you see them driving into the breakdown lanes, you see them going through red lights, you see them stop at green lights. And many of us are guilty of that. The message should be sent that it's on an emergency basis or a very important vehicle. Should be on it, get on, get off. And that should be the message that you send to your, to your own kids. I'm not gonna call you when you're driving, unless it's very important. I think that's the message we want to get to your parents, or to the, the parents that you're, you're teaching. There's exemptions on there, there's exemption for police officers if they're in the performance of their duty, firemen, ambulance drivers, believe it or not, bus drivers that do not have passengers on there. Minors can't have phones in there, so if they're sixteen or seventeen, they're not allowed to use them.
At all.
At all. So President Lanzolfo, you mentioned, how do I get to use my phone legally? Recognize that most phones nowadays have the ability to pair with a newer car. The smartphones are capable, some of the older phones are not. So if you have either an older phone or a older vehicle, you, you'll have to get an accessory. Those accessories are a Bluetooth that you should probably see, they go into your ear, hearing from one ear. Earbuds, the earbud is a, basically it's a headphone, but only with one, one earpiece there. You're not allowed to drive with two piece, two earphones in your ear, it's illegal. And probably it's reasons you want to hear what you're surrounding. The Bluetooth costs about between fifty and seventy dollars, the earbud costs about twenty to thirty dollars. The earbud actually is a wire that connects to your phone. So that's how you can do it. The, the easiest and best way of doing this, most of you have the ability to just press a button on your, on your console, your steering wheel, and you're not taking your phone off the, your hands off the wheel, and you're not taking, you're not averting your eyes from the road. So these are the things that I'm trying to, trying to tell you, really, is the message is, yes, I know that they're giving you this ability to use this, but it should be used sparingly. Bottom line is this, if you, if you're holding the phone in your hand and you're talking or you're listening, honor facing that you, that you're going to get charged. My suggestion to everybody that doesn't have a Bluetooth built into their, the vehicle that they can, they can use, get your accessories ready now, because it's gonna prevent you from getting a ticket, number one. The law does allow that if you get the first ticket, and you can go out and buy one of those accessories, and bring it in there with a receipt, and be reimbursed for it. You know, or I should say, they'll wait you the hundred dollars, so. Those are the basics on that, there's, there'll be some growing pains, just like there were growing pains with the texting or the riding. I had some questions on this, and I called the RIT, and they were kind of in the air on a couple of things that I was questioning, and so- on a couple of things that I was questioning, and so they're giving legal advice on the things I was questioning. So if I'm questioning it, I know that the defense attorney is gonna be questioning it.
So I'm the earbud, so you can only have one in your ear, and that, you should have to be mindful of where that speaker is, right?
Well, you can't have it, you could, right, so you...
Because the speaker's attached to it.
Right, so they have, you can also buy, for about thirty dollars, they have a cradle that will either go onto the, onto the windshield or into your vents, and so it's in direct line with your, with you speaking, and so it comes back out, goes in your ear.
And some of the phones, and I don't know about Wall, but some of the phones, the chief's talking about the vent, there's a magnet that you can buy, an accessory, you put it on the back of your phone, and that accessory goes in the vent, and all you do is take your phone and put it on the vent. That's if you don't have new to, or new vehicle. You put it right there, when you're driving along, you can see the walls coming in, and you put your earbud in or the Bluetooth in your ear.
So legally...
There are a lot of little things you could do.
Right, you can accept, you can decline, or you can end a, end a conversation by having it in your hand, but if you're talking or you're listening, you're getting a ticket. Yeah, so.
And it's okay to hit the, like, if you have the earbud, you can acknowledge the call, because you have to hit the call, you have to hit the button once to take the call. Okay.
Or pull over.
Was that what you're pointing at?
Shouldn't you put your shoulder in my room? Can you pull over and put it in the park if you don't have a hand?
Obviously, if you're, you're in a legal spot, what it states in there is that you can't, can't be in motion. One of my questions is, is it, are you in motion when you're sitting at a, at a red light and waiting for them to come back on?
Don't choose, people are gonna get defensive.
That's what the defense attorney would do.
The shoulder of the road is not in motion.
You're not gonna try to walk.
Shoulder of the road, if you're driving.
Right, but you obviously have to park in a safe area and a legal area.
Yeah, exactly, how many people do you wanna kill?
Does anybody else have any questions for Chief Palmer? Yes, sir.
Chief, how does this affect using navigation?
Yes.
I'm afraid somebody's gonna say that. I'm gonna give everybody an out here, but that's a problem, that when, when they had the texting for driving, texting and driving, that was, they recognized that using the GPS violated the texting and driving law, and so they came up with another law that allows you to use your GPS, which gives law enforcement a lot of, because now we have, the proof is ours to make. We can't, we can't seize your phone, we can't go through your phone unless it's a serious traffic accident. We could possibly get your phone records, but we have the obligation to, to prove your case, and unfortunately, that's one of those scenarios where you're allowed to use your GPS, so. It can be a loophole for us. Look, but thanks for bringing that up.
You're in front of my house every morning, and you have kids on the bus. Anything else on this topic, folks, or questions?
I appreciate everybody staying around, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming out. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. We have like twenty-five kids that'll be waiting for us, right, Carolyn?
Thank you, it's my thirtieth year.
Orders and commissions, discuss, consider, vote to reappoint Mary Parsons to the fourth round of the budget.
Move that we reappoint Mary Parsons to the fourth round of the partnership.
Second, all, any comments, questions, all those in favor? Aye. Aye, thanks.
Thank you.
No, okay. Last public forum. Motion to the chairman, please?
No.
Second, all those in favor? Aye. Aye, thank you.